It's six o'clock on January 26th. Happy January 26th. And I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Canton Township Trustees on January 26th at 6:00 PM. So Clerk Segrist, can you please call roll? I'm speaking slowly.
Oh, you're fine. And as you are called, please let us know where you are located, if you will. But Trustee Borninski.
I am here and I am at my house in Canton Township.
All right. Trustee Foster.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township.
Trustee Ganguly.
Ming, I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening, I'm here at Canton Township.
Segrist is here and in Canton Township at his home. Slavens.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township.
And Snyderman.
And I am also present in Canton Township.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Court.
Thank you, Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll?
Borninski.
Hi.
Yes. Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you, agenda passed. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes for January 9th and 12th, 2021?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the minutes as presented with the amendments requested by Trustee Borninski prior to the meeting.
The part.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please call roll?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So if anyone has any public comment, please raise your hand. You do not need to comment publicly regarding sidewalks because you will be able to do that during the sidewalk hearing. But do we have anyone in the audience that wants to ask some questions? I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Madam Supervisor, I had a gentleman email prior to the meeting.
Okay.
On behalf of a resident. If I can read his letter.
Sure, go ahead.
All right. And this is dated today. Our subdivision is in close proximity to the Michigan Avenue and Lily Road intersection. We have been bothered by disturbing noise since the spring of 2016. An attempt to alleviate the noise was made recently. Thank you, Jack. However, the noise continues. Yeah, both day and night. The intensity goes to the 80 to 90 decibel range. The ordinance officer has never been able to track the source of the noise despite numerous phone calls. We have appeared before the Board of Trustees. Former. With the Public Safety Officer, Police Lieutenant and other township officials to no avail. We would like to see the noise issue reduced to the ordinance limit to do. And so as stated in Article 2, Newsense's Section 3431, Dr. H. Coleman R's. And I apologize, that was handwritten, so I was attempting to read that. That is it.
Okay, thank you. We can look at that in our office again. We are familiar with this issue with Mr. Coleman R. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, I'm seeing none. It's the end of public comment. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll?
Can I ask who said support? I apologize.
Or Tanya.
Okay. Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. Can I have a motion to enter public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move that we open the public hearing at 6:06 PM.
The part.
Thank you. The sidewalk ordinance became effective on July 1st, 1999 and was amended on August 2nd, 2001 under Chapter 16, Article 2, Section 31-36. The ordinance was adopted to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the Charter Township of Canton through adoption of regulations concerning the construction and maintenance of sidewalks within the township. The sidewalk ordinance requires the township to hold a public hearing regarding the necessity of repairs for the 2021 Sidewalk Repair Program Spring. And Mr. Segrist, please call roll on the public hearing.
I'm sorry, do the vote?
Yes.
All right. All right. Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Um, aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. We now have the public hearing open and our first presenter would be Jade Smith, our Municipal Services Director. Jade, do you have some slides you wanted to show?
Yes, I do. Good evening. If I can share my screen and then also Clerk Segrist, I believe that Bill Surcheck is in the participant if you wanted to elevate him.
Excellent. Sorry, I'm having fun here. Okay, let's see here. Okay, you've got the screen?
Yep.
I will find Surcheck and I will elevate him to panelist.
Okay, great. What I thought I would do is because we do have some new members of the board and I was speaking with the supervisor. She did read a little bit about the executive and then the executive summary of the RBA, but I thought I'd go through a little bit of the actual sidewalk repair program and some of the things that are looked at, the steps that we take and how the program works before we go into the the public hearing and hear from any residents. And at any time, if you have questions, please stop me and I will back up. I do have Erica Hidalgo and Bill Surcheck from the Engineering Department with us tonight. Erica is very intimate with this program and she is the the face of the program with our residents and our businesses. Very, very tough job that she has that she's here to answer any questions. So with that, I will get started. And so as it said in the RBA, the sidewalk program dates back to 1999 and that was as a result of a landmark case that went all the way to the Michigan Supreme Court in 1997 that Canton Township actually lost. And it really did guide the way that sidewalks are, the responsibility of the sidewalks and the maintenance of the sidewalks throughout the state of Michigan. The the goal of the program is obviously to inspect the oldest subdivisions planted in the township. And then in the later years, it was consolidated by the subdivisions in the area. When the first, when this first was rolled out, it was supposed to be a 16-year cycle to get through all of the sidewalks throughout the township. We've now, that was down to 10 years at one time, now we're back up to 12 years due to the growth of the township. And as I said, most of the concerns that we get and the questions that we that we have from the residents are handled through the Engineering Department. The sidewalks, the township has actually broken up into different zones. And I, the zones can actually be found on the website. I did not put those into this handout, but I can actually go out. If there's questions at the end, I can go out and get that map and bring it back up. But the township is broken up into 10 zones and these are the zones that are scheduled for the next five years. 2020, with the the zone we're here to talk about tonight is actually a partial of Zone 5. This is a result of our water main repairs and replacement project that we did in 2020 and it took place in this area. Instead of assessing and sending notices to these residents at that time, the project itself took care of some of the the sidewalks that needed to be repaired or replaced. So that actually saved some of the some of the costs to the residents and was worked right into the water main replacement program. The water, the the project. So we're looking at Zone 5 tonight, which is Glengarry North Estates, Glengarry Village 1 through 6 and Glengarry Woods. I did put on here Zone 6 for 2021 because this this will be the larger project that will come before you in a few months, probably in March. So we'll have our next public hearing for the large program that we will have and we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. So every year, the township does work on three different types of sidewalk repairs. One is warranty work, three is the current construction repair. And then also we do future markings and quantities to prepare ourselves for subsequent years. This is a very labor time consuming project or process that we go through on an annual basis because it never seems to stop. So you would think right now that we're not working too much on the sidewalk program when actually that's just the opposite. We are in the back office working on what's going to happen next with this program in the next, the next subsequent zones. Once the sidewalks, the zones are identified and inspections are done, sidewalks, the the actual sidewalk sections are color coded, red with red dots or green dots. Red dots actually indicate the township holds the responsibility for that and pays for it. And the green dots show the areas that the residents are responsible for. So you're probably asking, how do we actually identify which section of sidewalk needs to be repaired? And we'll go through some of that now. I have some pictures along with some of the definitions to to show you. So I believe that I'm going to go through six different scenarios where a sidewalk may need to be repaired. The first one is sidewalk displacement and that's where if there's more, 3/4 of an inch or more between any two slabs and you can see that there's a raised elevation, that's obviously a trip hazard. The next is a is spalling sidewalk and that's in any five linear feet of the sidewalks, greater than 50% of the surface has got scaling of of at least 1/4 inch or more. There's spider cracking, which you can see in the photo. It pretty much looks just like it's like it's like it's called. And then obviously large cracks. And the cracks have to have more than two cracks and 1/4 inch of width or more in any two linear feet of the sidewalk section. So now that you, you know, as you walk through the township, you'll notice that there's, these areas are all over the place. And these are some of the things we look at. We also look at ponding water and we also look at the switch or the slope of the sidewalk. A lot of times that occurs when you can see there we have trees in the right of way. Those roots actually lift the sidewalk and create additional trip hazards and abnormalities. We also do obviously utility repair work. If it's damaged or was it removed due to construction or utilities, we put that back in. And then obviously we have to maintain our own township, our own utility structures like manholes for the water system and gate valves. So where there is a manhole that has caused an abnormality within the sidewalk, you can see that the slabs directly around the manhole itself are indicated in red and that is the township's responsibility. If the abnormality goes any further than that, then that is put back onto the homeowner or the commercial owner of that business. We do look at bringing everything into ADA compliance as we're working through the the process. And that is actually a cost that's buried by the township itself. That is not put on the homeowner. This talks about medians in common park areas. We have a lot of associations within the township and where you see long stretches that would be along a common area or a median. That is then actually assessed to the homeowner association unless it has to do with the ADA. ADA improvements and that again is is the township takes care of that. You know, it is the duty of every owner of the property to maintain and keep their sidewalks and driveway approaches in a good, safe condition for public travel. So how this actually works is we do a public notification of the repairs that are needed after we identify what is needed. The letters are sent out to the homeowners. In that, in in this case, I have the, I have the month of March here and that's actually usually for the big program. This public hearing tonight and this small section of Zone 5 is something that hasn't occurred in the past because we haven't had such a large water main replacement project in the past where we've had to do two public hearings. So on a normal year, we would do this in March. We would be sending that information out to the homeowners and then we would have the public hearing at that time. And then they, what would happen after they receive that notice and we have our public hearing? Once the board hears them and approves to move forward with the program, the homeowner actually has a couple of different things they can do. One, they can actually replace it themselves or two, Ken can come in and replace it for them. And then we will invoice the resident for the work performed. That work is usually gets done between the months of June and July. And then the invoices are sent out subsequently after that. For this particular year in 2021, Zone 5 that we're talking about tonight, we will have construction start after April 1st because we've already identified this repair zone as it was delayed from last year due to the water main project. Zone 6, that project, that yes, that construction will start after June. We will have most likely that public hearing on March 9th. We're still working through that, but I believe that that's going to be the date we'll have our next public hearing for the sidewalk program, which will be on March 9th. So in conclusion, the sidewalk repair program, obviously it effectively, effectively corrects the sidewalk defects. Defects can occur due to age deterioration, cracking, disintegration, root lifting and construction work activities. And repairing these defects provides a safe pedestrian travel for our residents in a beautiful community that they and their children can enjoy for years. This that we're talking about tonight is different than the GAP program, which we've previously touched on. And I believe that's going to be a topic coming at a future study session. But this tonight is is strictly for the sidewalk repair replacement program. I know that was rather quick, but I wanted to make sure that we had enough time obviously to hear from any of the residents and the concerns that they have, but also to answer any questions from the board. So with that, that was, that's a really brief overview of the sidewalk program. And obviously myself, Erica and Bill are here to to go into more detail if it's if it's warranted.
Thank you. So we'll start with the residents. Please, if you have any questions, if you could give an address, that would help. Also, if you have a lot of questions that you need about your particular situation, rather than answering here, we can create a, if you give us your contact information, send it to my Segrist. We can get in touch with you or you could just let me see, you can contact Erica Hidalgo. But do any of our residents have any questions? I'll look for your hand. You can raise your hand. I don't see any phones to dial star 6, but if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any right now. So we'll go back to board members to see if any questions then. Maybe if the resident jumps on late, we can see something. Do we have any questions from the board? Kate?
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first one is I saw something about 60 days that a resident would have to complete the repairs if they were going to do them, you know, themselves. Since we're doing our hearing, this hearing for Zone 5 right now in January, I'm wondering about that 60 days because I'm wondering if it makes a difference if the ground is frozen.
Jade, could I jump in? I wanted, I wanted to add something that's critical about this particular area in Glengarry. We have been through this area several times in the past few years. The residents are have been notified actually before of a sidewalk program that was delayed one year. And this year, we were in there with an extensive water main program. So we have a, we have a very knowledgeable base of residents in there. And the idea is since we finished the water main work last year and the critical issue is this subdivision and others in the area want to do our roads program this year. We're trying to get this sidewalk work done as soon as we can in the spring so that when the road work, so they don't conflict with the road work in Glengarry. So that's why this subdivision is is a little bit unique. So we don't expect many residents will want to do their own work. And this is the opportunity that we're, we're trying to give them just a little bit earlier than usual.
Right. And I, I think to answer your question, Kate, yes, obviously we're going to adhere to the Frost laws and once the ground is actually able to be to be constructed, we would, we would allow that to take. We, we can't force that to be done during the bad weather. So we will work with the homeowners on that, yes.
Okay, good.
Oh, Madam Supervisor, I have a point of kind of procedure. Given that we are currently in a public hearing and the purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments either in favor of or against the measure. Three motions, there's that motion to open the public hearing, motion to close the public hearing. And then we would be voting on the program itself. So comments and questions that are not in favor of or opposed are really germane to the third and final motion, not inside the public hearing. Since we're the deliberative body. So my request is can we close the public hearing since we opened it? And then we could go into debating questions on the third motion. It's just parliamentary procedure, kind of stickler.
Sure. I was seeing if maybe another resident would jump on and answer a question, but we can, I haven't seen it.
Just quickly, by this portion, when I'm making minutes are required to state the name of the individual speaking and then whether or not they are in favor of or opposed to the program. So it's, it just makes, A, the the minutes portion of this section almost impossible. And B, it's just contrary to kind of the purpose, you know, the the purpose of the, like the public hearing is for the public. And then the deliberation is for, is for the board.
Okay.
I can, I'm happy to ask my question later.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So Madam Supervisor, I move that the board close the public hearing at 6:24.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, please call roll.
All right. That was Trustee Foster. Okay, Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Is Jack on the table again? Oh, there he is. All right, thank you. So would we need to ask the question again or respond to it?
All right, so I will. Let me read the motion. Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the attached resolution requiring replacement of sidewalks in Glengarry North, Glengarry Village Number 1 and Glengarry Village Number 2 as indicated on the attached list and published in the Canton Eagle on January 21, 2021.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Right, Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
So let me see. So what about motion number three? Do I hear your motion number three?
That was motion number three.
So the motion has been seconded? And we rule? Yes. So technically, there's nothing discussed anymore.
Would you like the question again? Anyone have any more questions?
I'm sure we can just ask questions.
Come on, you guys are good questioners.
I had another question.
Yes, Kate, please.
So I, I obviously am in favor of this, but I'm just wondering, does this cover all of, does this program cover all of the subdivisions in Canton, including those that are part of the Pheasant Run Roadway Management Association?
Kate, no, this does not include Parma. Parma is actually funded through the three, through the three subdivisions.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen.
Jade, thanks for the presentation. It's always good to see that thank you at the end from the kids on the sidewalk trot.
Yeah. I'll have to switch that up in the next coming years, it's getting old.
I'll draw one for you. So is there, is, I've discussed this in the past. It would be good if there was a app where people could report issues with sidewalk. Is there on our website? Have we developed that any further, the ability to do that?
I, we have not. I will say, I think that's a great idea. I know there are apps out there that allow that. I don't remember us talking about that last year, but I can definitely work with Wendy and the IT folks because I know that there are reporting apps you can do right from your phone that are GPS.
Yeah. You know. Must have been a couple of years ago, probably before your time, that we talked about.
Yeah, but we can definitely look into that and that's an easy. I don't want to say it's easy, I don't want to speak. But it's, it definitely is something that's out there and we can actually look at that tool and and look and see how much that cost is. That's a great idea.
Okay, great, thanks.
And as we said, I mean, if anyone has any questions, they can always keep contacting Jade and Erica and Bill.
And we, and I probably should say that when the letters go out and the notifications go out to the public, they do have direct phone numbers and emails to get ahold of Erica when they get them. So I know that she has fielded, I think, only two phone calls with this mailing, which that's, that, that's a, oh, one, that's amazing. So. So yeah, so they do, they have, they do feel free to contact engineering and they do quite frequently.
Yes. And of course Erica has been known to come up, go out to people's houses also.
Oh, yes, we all do.
Because you, you do hire a company to do this and so sometimes.
Yes.
I, I know it's hard, as a follow-up question, I know it's hard to because there's so, as you say, there's more and more sidewalk, sidewalk, which is great. But I wonder if there's like a financial view of it that even our Director Trummel could help with that shows that if we actually did more each year, that we would have fewer issues. You know, because 12 years is a long time, especially in a Michigan, with Michigan winters. And if we were doing it maybe half that time, every six years doubling up, that we might actually save money. But I don't know, just a thought.
If I can jump on that real quick, that is something that Erica and I and Bill met in preparing for tonight, probably about three or four weeks ago and also starting to look at the 2022 in preparing for tonight, probably about three or four weeks ago, and also starting to look at the 2022 budget. And I've mentioned it to Wendy, and I've mentioned it to the supervisor as well, as looking at what more could the township contribute to it, so that we could actually get that cycle going in the other direction, back down closer to a ten-year cycle, or under ten years, as opposed to going from back from ten to twelve. So I think that's something that's really worth, for, for what it's worth, that's my opinion. I think it's really worth looking, looking at and seeing what we can do from a township's perspective.
Wendy, did you want to add anything to that?
You know, only that I'm happy to sit in with Director Smith and his team to help go through that analysis. I haven't been part of that in the past yet, but I do agree with Jade, it's probably worthwhile to look at that and you report back to the board, we could talk about that, you know, after this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we completed motion three, is that correct? I'm reading, catching up here. Yeah. So the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt a consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Court of Ordinances regarding the Metro Opportunities 1 LLC and Metro Opportunities 10 LLC rezoning. And then item C2, consider adoption of a resolution for approval of application for additional MRRS service credit by an employee.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please call roll?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item we move on to is our general calendar. Item number one, can I please have a motion to consider appointment to mayor commission?
Madam Supervisor, I move that Canton Board Trustees approve the appointment of James Moon Dupree to the mayor commission to fulfill the rest of Richard Keenan's term, which expires on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Thank you, and we do have Mr. Dupree here. I don't know if you want to elevate him. But the resignation of one of Canton's mayor commissioners, Richard Keenan, has created a vacancy in the mayor commission in the position that is selected by the township board. A notice was posted online and through social media calling for applicants for this position. James Moon Dupree submitted an application, and Supervisor Graham Hudek is recommending him for the appointment to the mayor commission. Mayor Commissioners are appointed for six-year terms. Mr. Moon Dupree would be fulfilling the rest of Mr. Keenan's term, which expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So congratulations, Mr. Dupree. Actually, Jade, Mr. Dupree, did you want to say anything? No, he's being shy, okay. Well. Great, so Mr. Seagres, can you please, please have a roll call on the motion?
I think he took himself off of mute.
Oh, Mr. Dupree.
No, I don't. James Moon Dupree, and no, I don't have anything to say, but thank you for the appointment.
All right, thank you. Congratulations and welcome. Can I please have a roll call on the motion?
I think one of the reason we blew past the third motion is because we never had a call for discussion in motion being made and the, and the vote itself. So I don't know if you want to call for discussion.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dupree, or just want to discuss? Thank you. Okay, can we have, please have a roll.
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Seagres, oh, sorry, Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Moon Dupree.
Thank you very much.
Our next item, G2, consider appointments to tax board review. Tell your motion, please. We did it.
Just one moment. Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board Trustees approve the appointments of Erfan Joffrey, Paris Fu, and Ethan Petzel to the Canton Tax Board Review for two-year terms to expire on March first, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Seagres. Just to let you know, I see Mr. Fu on and Ethan Petzel. There are currently three vacancies on Canton's tax board review. A notice was put into the December Focus Newsletter asking for Canton residents to submit applications. The Boards and Commissions interviews committee, committee selected S. Erfan Joffrey, Paris Fu, and Ethan Petzel to fill the vacancies. The tax board review members are appointed to two-year terms because work for this board begins in March, and the term expiration dates have been set at three, one, twenty-three. So do we have any questions from the board? Summer?
Not a question. I just want to note that we had a lot of good people submit applications for tax board of review, and so trustee Snyderman, Supervisor Graham Hudek, and Amy Houston sat down and we interviewed a number of folks for this position, and we think that we selected three great folks to sit on our tax board of review. So I can't wait to get them involved with the township committees.
Thank you. Stephen?
I'll just concur with what trustee Foster said, and just add that it's great to see such talented people coming out for these committees. I think that there are, there's so much resource in our community, and I'm glad that they're stepping up. I think they're going to be great additions to our tax board review.
Michael?
I have a question. There was the incident where the confirmation for the training for the MTA was sent to my email. Have we, have we worked that out? Did we set up everybody who needs the training with their appropriate emails?
I don't know, Jade, that went to you also, is that correct?
It was on accident. I thought it had something to do with the planning. I didn't know what the board review was.
Yeah, I thought it had something to do with planning as well, but then when we realized what it was, I did not proceed. I'm more than happy to do that if I can get the emails, but I, I don't have any access to that.
Yes.
Someone needs to close the loop with assessing, I think.
Yep, we will do that with Amy.
I'm, I'm the point of contact for the MTA, apparently.
Yeah, right. And there were no emails attached to that as to who took the training, right?
I haven't, they've taken it yet.
Okay.
You could ask if any of them have gotten the email, if they're on, I don't know if they are.
So Ethan, have you gotten any information on training?
Yeah, I actually attended the training yesterday morning.
Very good.
Do you know, do you know if the others did as well?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't see them, I don't see Mr. Fu on, he was, but, okay.
So perhaps that issue is resolved itself.
Great, we'll find out. We can find that out. Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? It was a good process, and they were good interviews, thank you. So, Mr. Seagres, can I have a roll call to approve the motion, or can I have a roll call on that motion, please?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
So congratulations, Ethan. Do you want to say anything to the board?
Thank you, thank you for the appointment.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck, congratulations. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, G3, consider approval of amendment to the final plan development for Tremont Place, formerly named Wellington on the Willow, and approval of the site plan for Tremont Place. No motion for that.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board Trustees, okay, that's the separate. I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the following resolution, approval of planned district amendment number two in site plan for Tremont Place, formerly named Wellington Willow. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment number two, plan development district for Tremont Place, formerly called Wellington on the Willow, located on the east side of Lots Road between Ford and Cherry Hill Roads. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the amended plan development plan, plan development agreement and site plan, voted nine to zero to recommend approval of the requests as they meet their criteria for a planned development result in definite benefits to the community and comply with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance, except where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve amendment number two of the Tremont Place planned development and approve the site plan for Tremont Place of the tax parcel numbers listed as proposed in the planning, planned development agreement and plan documents submitted to the Township's attorneys. Township agrees approval of the PD agreement, master deed, and bylaws, and subject to any necessary revisions to the landscape plans in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Thank you. Heather Longwood, at its meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty, the Township Board of Trustees approved an amended plan development for Wellington on the Willow, now named Tremont Place, for two hundred and sixty-eight units. Planning Commission recommended approval of the amended plan development on June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Previously, the original final PDD was approved by the Township Board on October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. At this time, the applicants proposed amendments to the PD approved on July fourteenth, twenty twenty, that include the following. One, reducing the side separation of buildings twenty and twenty-one, from twenty-four feet nine inches to twenty feet. Building six and eight from twenty-five feet two inches to twenty-one feet six inches. Two, reducing the separation between a parking lot and building ten to ten feet. Building fifteen to nineteen feet eleven inches, and building sixteen to nineteen feet six inches. Three, extending the PDD expiration date to six years from approval of the amended PD. And four, increasing the number of phases from three to four. The purpose of the proposed narrower separation distance is to comply with requirements of the prior code, and the purpose of extending the expiration date and increasing the build-out to four phases is to allow the applicant time to construct the proposed project, because the original six-year approval period will expire in twenty twenty-four. The conditional rezoning was approved by the Township Board in November two thousand and sixteen that changed the zoning of the site from LI, Light Industrial, to R6, Single Family Attached Residential, and removed the land area from the corporate park overlay. The statement of conditions included a conceptual plan for a maximum of two hundred and eighty-two attached residential units on the forty acres of land included in the project, less than the maximum density permitted by the comprehensive plan and that allowed in the R6 zoning district. The offer of conditions also required approval of a planned development district and restricts future development by prohibiting many uses that could otherwise be considered in the R6 district. The final PDD was approved by the Township Board on October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. The amended PD approved by the Township Board on July fourteenth, twenty twenty, reduced the number of units from two eighty-two to two sixty-eight, eliminated four-story buildings, and modified the architectural design of the buildings. Also, the amended PD project is proposed as condominiums instead of rental apartments. So Jade, did you have anything to add to that?
I don't have anything more to add. I think it was pretty clear. I do know that Mr. Stolman is on, on the call as well. If there's any questions for, for the petitioner.
Yeah, Patrick is very thorough. Does anyone have any questions? Summer?
I'll just add that at the Planning Commission meeting, most of the folks on the Planning Commission were already familiar with this project because it had come before the Commission and come before the board before. There were a number of comments supportive about, of the changes and supportive of, of the way that the, the development looks. There were concerns about the extension of the approval, approval process and the wetlands, but those were addressed during the Planning Commission meeting, and you can see those in the, in the minutes, but. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Tanya?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to comment that it is, it really looks good. I looked at the project, and it really looks good, and it has a lot of open area. You know, the trees being planted and giving a lot of open area, and I read the Planning Commission minutes, and I think everybody in the Planning Commission really had good comments on it, so. And the elevations really look quite different, quite interesting, and I'm looking forward to this project. I think it should, it would be behind the Home Depot. And imagine, that's where it is, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Stephen?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Director Smith, there's a, there, by the way, I think it looks great too, so, but I just had a small question. There's a, an over, like an aerial view map, I think it's on page sixty-six in our packet. If, is it possible you could bring that up?
Yes.
Oh yeah, you'd have to rotate.
I have to turn it.
Oh, that's on my keyboard, it's Ctrl Shift minus, does rotate, it doesn't always show up, yeah, there you go. So, and Mr. Stolman, you can answer this as well. In, in this diagram, there's, I see the retention ponds on the left side there. They look quite interesting. There's, there's something to the left or north of those retention ponds in the woods that's white, and I was wondering what that is. So to the left of the retention ponds.
Here?
No, down by the trees, yeah, that white line. I was wondering what that was.
You know, I'm not sure, that may just be the result of the graphic artist, the way they drew it.
Okay.
It's not clear to me.
Okay, and the reason I ask, and I know, I know we have a lot more to go through in this process, but I see, and I think I saw in another diagram that there's maybe a path through the woods in the, on the south side, that big woods on the south side, some kind of trail. That was on another black and white diagram. But the question I was going to ask you is if you could, Jade, if you could zoom in a little bit, there's a path on one side of the, or sidewalk, on one side of the retention ponds.
Right here?
Yeah, yeah. So just a thought, Mr. Stolman, I would love to see that path go around the retention ponds, for people to be able to bike around the retention ponds. I wasn't sure if that white line was a sidewalk, that's why I was asking, or a path, yeah.
I don't believe it is, but we can look into it as we're going through engineering.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll ask it again if I don't see it, but then it could just lead back out to the main sidewalk on Lots Road in, in the end. Yeah, that, that was a question that I had.
We'll have to look at the grades and that, but we'll definitely take a look at.
Okay, I just think it would make them even more usable, and the space even more usable, which would be nice for bikers and walkers, whatever, joggers. That's all I had, I'm looking forward to the project, it's been a while. I don't remember if you've been involved in the project all along, but we, I think we approved this originally in concept back in like twenty fifteen or something like that, so. I'm looking forward to seeing it become a reality in the coming years.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Comments? All right, thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Grand Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snideman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, G four. Consider approval of second amendment to memorandum of understanding regarding prosecutorial legal services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the second amendment to memorandum of understanding regarding prosecutorial legal services and authorize Township Supervisor to execute the same on behalf of Canton Township.
Support. Thank you. Honor about July first, two thousand thirteen, Canton entered into a memorandum of understanding regarding prosecutorial legal services. With the law firm of Hemming, Palachek, Cronin, Witoff, and Bennett P C. The firm of Hemming Palachek has been a longtime provider of both prosecution and general legal services to Canton Township. After the first in-house counsel was hired in two thousand nine, their services were limited to providing prosecutorial services for Canton cases in the thirty fifth District Court. An amendment to memorandum of understanding regarding prosecutorial legal services was entered into in two thousand sixteen whereby Hemming Palachek would provide limited non-prosecution services. At no cost to Canton. The former principals of the firm have retired except for Kevin Bennett. In a recognition of these changes, the firm has changed its legal name to Bennett and Demopolis L L L C. A second amendment to the memorandum of understanding formalizing the change has been approved by Greg Demopolis on behalf of the firm. A new W nine has been provided by the firm. Kristen, would you like to add anything?
I don't know that I have that much extra to add. It's really just to recognize that the name change of the law firm and to make sure that all of our records and. Accounting records line up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on the board? Okay, seeing none. So go ahead, Michael.
Well, this is a kind of a formal memorandum change, but I just will will say that. You know, having toured the thirty fifth District in court in the past and worked with prosecutor Demopolis, you know. Mr. Demopolis, he's been doing a great job for the township and I appreciate the work that he's doing, that he's doing for us.
Yes, we keep them very busy. There's no question.
And maybe after COVID, the rest of the board members also can tour and sit with him. It's real interesting.
Yeah, it's a it's a very nice facility and and we have some good judges and you get a real taste of what they do over there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Seagris, can you please call roll on the motion?
Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Grand Hudek.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Seagrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snideman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G five, renewal of uniform video service local franchise agreement with Comcast of the South Incorporated.
So I have two model resolutions. Is there any indication of which one I should begin discussion with?
Kristen, is it okay to do? Anyone?
Yeah, I mean, certainly you can make the motion and then, you know, if it dies for lack of second, or if the board decides to go a different direction, the maker of the motion can certainly withdraw. Do you want me to say a little bit more about why there's two motions?
Could you please?
Yes.
Sure. So under the state act, which is called the Uniform Video Services Local Franchise Act. There's essentially two methods by which you can approve a franchise agreement. You can do it as a two step process. The first step being to declare the agreement to complete and then at a second meeting. Take the action to actually approve it, or if the board feels like it is complete and there are no. Additional changes or discussions that need to be held, you can just go ahead and proceed to approve the agreement.
Okay. And I see the five percent in there, just like the previous contract, and I see the two percent in there, so I will.
For Comcast, it is not two percent for the peg fee. It's point seven five percent.
Let's see. Okay. Okay. I will. All right, I'll make the second motion. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a renewal of uniform video service local franchise agreement with Comcast of the South is allowed under Act four eighty of two thousand and eight for a period of ten years with a franchise fee of five percent and a peg fee of point seven five percent. Of gross revenues and authorized Township Supervisor to sign U V S L F A on behalf of Canton Township.
Second.
Thank you. In two thousand six, the Michigan Legislature adopted the Uniform Video Service Services Local Franchise Act, U V S L F A. Which created a uniform franchising system for video cable service providers to sign franchise agreements with local units of government. Canton Township was originally provided a U V S L F A agreement in late two thousand ten. Though a dispute over the fee Comcast was to pay for public education and government, P E G. Access support left the agreement incomplete until two thousand thirteen. The U V S L F A provides for a ten year term of the agreement, which is set to expire on February seventh, two thousand twenty one. Comcast now seeks a renewal franchise agreement under the U V S L F A. State law requires first a determination that the proposed agreement is complete and then a resolution from the board declaring that the agreement is approved. However, at the board's discretion, the board may vote at this meeting to approve the agreement. Please note that if no action is taken within thirty days of the receipt of the agreement from Comcast, it will be deemed automatically approved under Michigan law. The agreement provides for a payment of a franchise fee of five percent of gross revenues and a peg fee, P E G fee of zero point seven five percent of gross revenues. The franchise fee of five percent is the maximum permitted under the U V S L F A. The maximum P E G fee under the U V S L F A is two percent, but Comcast has indicated it will not pay this amount unless Canton conducts a needs assessment. Kristen, did you want to add anything to that? Kind of did.
Lot of information as a follow up to a question from Trustee Snideman. I sent an email out today, hoping to clarify some of the points, so. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. It's. No, we're kind of limited in what we could do. Prior to two thousand six, negotiating these franchise agreements often took years and years and years. And at the time, A T and T was rolling out their. I forget what their service is called. U verse, thank you. You would know. And so they didn't want to have to go through that process to be able to launch their U verse system quicker, so they went to the legislature. And advocated for the passage of this act that would unify the process across the state. Rather than each individual municipality negotiating on different platforms. So the result was this act. We're very limited in in what we can negotiate and Comcast in particular has been. Difficult to work with and even though a lot of people thought everybody was supposed to get five percent franchise fee and two percent peg fee. Unfortunately, that's not what the act says. As I indicated in the email I sent out earlier today, both A T and T and WOW do pay the two percent. But the state law says that the largest incumbent provider is the the group that sets the peg fee. And so because Comcast was the largest incumbent provider in two thousand six. And because they had previously never paid Canton a peg fee, they moved ahead with that zero. And it took, it took some time. They started, Mr. LaJoy started negotiating before I started. And just to help you understand that the point five four, I believe it was, that was originally agreed to in two thousand thirteen. Was essentially twenty cents per subscriber per year. And then the the peg grants, the four hundred thousand were specifically related to providing peg services and taking over playback. Believe it was for Plymouth and Livonia. So they gave us some upfront costs to get equipment and. Mainly equipment in place to be able to offer that service to those communities. So for this renewal, since those systems are in place rather than the the cash grants. They sort of recomputed what that would come out to be and came up with that point seven five percent of gross revenues. I don't know. Comcast would have to provide us with exactly what that works out to per subscriber. So I don't know exactly what that will do to, you know, the subscribers' bills at this point. Wendy did provide the numbers for the last five years showing what we have received from all three companies, both the franchise fee and the peg fees, so you get an idea of. Exactly what kind of money that those fees bring in for the township.
Thank you, Steven.
Yeah, thank you, Kristen, Wendy, for the information. It was really helpful to understand the background. I remember we did do some. Negotiations recently, but nothing like this since maybe since I've been here. I don't know. So that was good to understand. The only last question that I have, and I see this is a ten year agreement. Which still gives us a significant chunk of money, one and a half million dollars a year or so, maybe a little more. Although it's been decreasing due to people on on cutting, cutting their ties from cable. But is what can, what can the peg fee be used for since it seems to be regulated?
So under Federal Communications Commission order, it is limited to. Capital costs related to peg services, so you know, brick and mortar building, cameras. Probably internet, wifi, those kinds of things. Now, state law is a little bit broader, not much, but people tend to err on the the caution side. Side of caution and more strictly adhere to the. The FCC order. There's, there's no federal, it's not addressed in the Federal Communications Act. The Federal Telecom Act. But because Canton never really received peg fees before two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The sort of salaries for staff were paid out of the general fund and they didn't ever rely on the peg fees. So with respect to peg fees that come in after, we've been limiting to them to those capital costs.
And that's related to our cable channel? Things like.
Yeah, that, yeah, you know, we have our own cable studio. We don't do public access very much, but we do do educational and and government access, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Kate?
Yes, thanks. So. I see the letter from Comcast about the renewal. It stated January fifth. Is, would that be when the thirty days start? Like if we didn't take action with the, would the thirty days start with January fifth?
Yeah, so the way the statute receive or reads. To accept it, which is the first motion that was on the thing, you have fifteen business days. But to approve it, you have thirty calendar days and it is counted from the day it's received. And it came in, was actually emailed directly to the supervisor, if I recall. Rather than coming, you know, as a hard copy in the mail, so.
Okay, so. We would have to take action by next week or. The thirty days clause would come into to play.
Correct, correct. If, I think we did give you the prior contract from two thousand ten. If you, and that's a rather long document, attached to it is something called an attachment three, I believe. And that's what Comcast filed with the state back in two thousand ten, when the township approved the contract with a two percent franchise free that they are, excuse me, peg fee that they were disputing. They file that attachment three, which basically says telling the state, yep, it's approved and it's approved on the terms that we Comcast provided. And then if you go further through that packet, you'll see where that was actually retracted and an agreement was attached to it with. Once we agreed to the actual payment of a peg fee. So if thirty days goes by, Comcast files that attachment three with the M P S C. And the contract becomes. Approved under the terms and conditions that Comcast wrote down and sent to the township.
Okay, so I, you know, if we wanted to do this needs assessment to try to. You know, get more than point seven five percent. Then that would need to be done by next week. Is that, am I thinking right as far as the timeline?
If you wanted to get it done by then, now we obviously can do a needs assessment anytime we want. It it's something you hire a professional outside firm to do. And, you know, I've done one. Yeah, it's.
So it costs us some money to get that done. And then we still may not be able to.
Get all the way to two percent. Yeah.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. So Clerk Seagris, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Trustee Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Grand Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist. Nay. Slavens.
Hi.
Snideman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is G six, renewal of uniform video service local franchise agreement with Wide Open West.
Madam. Supervisor. I move to approve a renewal of uniform video service local franchise agreement with Wide Open West. Michigan is allowed. Under Act four eighty of two thousand and eight for a period of ten years, the franchise fee of five percent and a peg fee of two percent of gross revenues and authorize Township Supervisor yourself to sign the U V S L F A on behalf of Canton Township.
Support. Thank you. In two thousand six, the Michigan Legislature adopted the Uniform Video Services Local Franchise Act, U V S L F A. Which created a uniform franchising system for video cable service providers to sign franchise agreements with local units of government. Canton Township originally entered into U V S L F A agreement with Wide Open West Michigan LLC, which is WOW, honor about July first, two thousand ten. U V S F L F A provides for a ten year agreement, ten year term of the agreement and technically expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Canton did not receive a proposed renewal agreement from WOW until December twenty twenty. WOW now seeks to renew its franchise agreement under the U V S L F A. State law requires first a determination that the proposed agreement is complete and then a resolution from the board declaring that the agreement is approved. However. At the board's discretion, the board may vote at this meeting to approve the agreement. Please note if no action is taken within thirty days of the receipt of the agreement from Comcast, it will be deemed automatically approved under Michigan law. The agreement provides for a payment of a franchise fee of five percent of gross revenues and a peg fee of two percent of gross revenues. The franchise fee of five percent is the maximum permitted under U V S L F A and two percent is the maximum peg fee permitted under state law. Kristen, I don't know if you wanted to add more for this one for WOW.
No, like you just read, they are paying the maximum franchise and the maximum peg fee.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
So I, the letter that I see. From them is dated November twentieth, two thousand twenty. So did the thirty day. Days start from that?
I don't believe we received it then. It came in via FedEx. I I forgot to double check the date. I think it was received in December. We've, we may not, well, we probably are past the fifteen days to. days to accept it, but they, I've been in communication with them because the first document that they sent to us contained nothing for a peg fee. The, it was just left blank, so I had emailed them back and said, this isn't correct. You've previously paid us two percent. So then they sent back a, an updated version and that happened in January. So. But I've been in communication, they knew it was going to the board tonight. We don't have any issues with timing with them.
Okay, good.
Thanks. Any other questions? Clerk Segers, can you please take a motion, a roll call motion?
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Ian Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Item G seven, request approval of two thousand and twenty one blanket purchase orders.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the two thousand and twenty one purchase orders as attached.
Support.
Thank you. Blanket purchase orders allow for recurring purchases of a specific service or commodity where the quantity of items or frequency of service cannot be fully determined. Attach is a list of two thousand and twenty one blanket purchase orders for those that either exceeded thirty thousand dollars or are expected to have a single purchase in excess of one thousand dollars. Wendy, would you like to add anything to that?
Anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Stephen?
Director Trumbull, is there something that we do for ten thousand blanket orders? Or is everything thirty now? Did we raise that in the last few years?
So blanket purchase orders are different than the standard purchase order. So if it's, if it's, if it's a one time purchase, it's over ten thousand dollars, it needs to go to the board. But these are, these are items that might be like supplies in nature. Like if you, if you look at the list, and this is for townshipwide, like paper products, you know, over the course of an entire year for, you know, toiletries and, you know, paper for printers. We spend a significant amount of money, but one purchase is not going to be, is not going to exceed even a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars or something that would have to come to the board. So we basically say, if we think overall, we're going to send more than thirty thousand dollars with any one type of product or any purchases that are less than that are going to exceed a thousand dollars. We have to bring those to the board for, for approval. We, we get that listing together at the beginning of the year. But any single purchase that we anticipate making that's over ten thousand dollars, we bring
Yep, okay, terminology, that was confusing, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Tanya?
So I, I just want to know, like in the future, so this is, this is for the entire year, right, Director Trumbull?
That, that is the intention. Occasionally a new blanket purchase order, if somebody inadvertently left one off or maybe they, we decided to change vendors sometime through the year, sometimes another one might pop up later. But the goal is to have all of the blanket ones at the beginning of the year. Standard purchase orders are going to come pretty much every meeting.
Okay, so if you have anything that's coming, like, you know, something new comes up and you need a blanket purchase order, you bring it up. I, I just want to know the procedure here. You bring it up in a future meeting, say something you have, say in June, something new has come up, some new type of work has come up and need a blanket, so that's, you'll, you would bring up another new blanket purchase orders later in the year if you
Absolutely, absolutely. So the procedure is that the individual departments enter into our system, the purchase orders that they may want for the year. And if it wasn't on this initial list, our purchasing coordinator, his position is actually title or financial analyst. He approves, he's the first level of the finance department's approval. If that didn't come to the board, he shoots it back to the department and says, this wasn't on our list. You have to take this to the board before this can be approved. And so that, if the, if the department forgets to, finance kind of triggers it back and sends it back to them to say, make sure this gets to the board before it gets approved. And then in this case, and any purchases that are over three thousand dollars require two of the three full time elected officials sign off as well. So there's, there's a few procedures in place to make sure we don't violate the purchasing policy. So by the time it gets through the department who enters it, it goes through the first level of the purchase of the finance department. And then it goes back to the individual departments for the supervisor or department director to sign off on. Then it comes to me and then it goes to the full time elect. And so there's a lot of levels of approvals before, before anybody can even purchase an item, so.
Yeah, you, you talked about that in our, you know, the whole session that we had over Saturday. You talked about the process for that. I was just trying to understand what happens if something comes up in the future with
It will, it will come back to you, yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Clerk Segers, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Item G seven passes. Item G eight, consider approval of actuarial valuation of the charter township of Canton Retiree Healthcare Plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposal from CBIZ, CBIZ Retirement Plan Services to provide the two thousand and twenty actuarial valuation of the retiree healthcare benefits in the two thousand and twenty one interim disclosure for a not to exceed fee of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars and to authorize the finance director to sign the acceptance of letter of engagement.
Support.
Thank you. To comply with the reporting requirements of the governmental accounting standards board, statements number seventy four and seventy five, all municipalities are required to have prepared an actuarial valuation of the retiree healthcare benefits. We are required to update the actuarial valuation every two years with the last one dated December thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. This report will provide us with required information that is necessary to be disclosed in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one financial audits. We are recommending that the board approve the director of finance and budget to enter into a contract with CBIZ for the December thirty first, two thousand and twenty actuarial valuation for retiree healthcare benefits. CBIZ has prepared this valuation for us for the last three required valuations. They have reduced their fee from our previous valuation by seven hundred fifty dollars. Therefore, the total cost of the valuation for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand and twenty and the interim disclosure recorded in two thousand and twenty one amounts to nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, of which three thousand five hundred will be incurred in two thousand and twenty two. Director Trumbull, do you have anything to add?
Just, just a couple of things. So this cost would actually be sixteen thousand dollars for the current year that we're in and thirty five hundred for next year. Because in the off year of the valuation, we're required to get a, it's not a really evaluation. It's just kind of a roll forward of some of our numbers to include in the audit. So it's not a full valuation. It's just some updated figures that the, that the actuaries provide for us. We've been really happy with CBIZ. We went out to bid a few years ago. Well, we've had them for this last three valuations. We had a former company that when things were changing and we had questions, they weren't able to answer our questions. CBIZ has done very thorough meeting with our auditors. And when there's been some accounting changes and answering questions when the liability has fluctuated and has, has really been almost a partner with us and trying to help us navigate where our funded level is. So we've been really happy with them. They also brought to, they brought up to us this year a way to lower our fee as well. So we're, we're pretty happy with them. But I'm happy to answer any questions. One, one last thing, again, this is for our current year audit. So I would expect this valuation to be complete sometime by between the end of March and end of April.
Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Clerk Segers, can you please read the motion? I'm sorry, can you read, please de-roll for the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. The next item is G nine, consider reappointment to the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board trustee of the Charter Township of Canton approve the reappointment of Summer Sakakini and Elena Semenov to the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage for a three year term to expire December thirty one, two thousand and twenty three.
Support.
Thank you. The Board of Trustee Interview Committee is recommending the reappointment of Samara Sakakini and Elena Semenov, whose current terms expire on twelve thirty one, twenty, to the Commission of Culture, Arts and Heritage. Samara is the current president of the commission and has been an active member of this commission since two thousand and fourteen. She's a very strong advocate of the arts in our community, has a previous membership of the Partnership for the Arts, as well as volunteering for events at the Village Theater, Liberty Fest and many other special events throughout the township. Elena has been an active member since two thousand and eighteen and represents the Art of Dance for the Cultural Commission. Elena has had experience, years of experience servicing the dance community as an instructor, producer and choreographer. Both reappointments will be for a three year term through twelve thirty one, twenty three. Greg, do you want to add anything?
I'm just that both, both have been great supporters of the commission. And we do have, just to solve any curiosity that the board may have, we do have a handful of vacancies on the commission. And we're getting interviews tomorrow with the interview committee to try and fill those vacant positions.
Thank you, any questions? Tanya?
Yeah, I just have a comment that I'm, I want to congratulate Summer and Elena. And I'm looking forward to working with them on the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage as a board representative.
Thank you, any other questions? And I don't see either of them in the attendees. Okay, Clerk Segers, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Item G ten. Yes. Consider approval of application for MLCC special liquor licenses.
This is in the form, there are three, three motions, Madam Supervisor. I move to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at the twenty ninth Annual Liberty Festival on June seventeenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one and further. I move that the following resolution be adopted that the Canton Rotary, through its duly elected officers, make application to the MLCC for a special license for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises to be in effect on June seventeenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one during Liberty Festival at Heritage Park located at ten ten Canton Center Road, Canton, Michigan, in the county of Wayne.
Support.
Thank you. Twenty twenty one, four fundraising events are planned to be held in conjunction with Canton Leisure Services at various township facilities that will require application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for special liquor licenses. Twenty ninth Annual Liberty Fest, June seventeenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Seventh Annual Rally at Ridge, July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. Eleventh Annual Brew, Brought Some Bands at the Barn, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty one. Thursday Night Live Concerts, July eighth through August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Leisure Services requesting Township Board approval to submit application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at these fundraisers. No penalty or additional expenses will be incurred should the event be canceled. Greg, did you want to add anything?
No, these are pretty standard events that we've done alcohol service at for a number of years. We added that last comment about should the events be canceled? We're just putting the pieces in place in the event that we're able to hold these events. But obviously with the current state of the pandemic, if things don't change, we, you know, we'll have to modify those events, which could be postponing, changing dates, modifying what we offer, you know, we may be able to offer the concerts, but not have the alcohol service there. So we have the liberty to make those modifications going forward. But if we don't make this application, then we, it's difficult to add that on at a later date.
Any questions? Okay, Kate?
Sorry, just sort of a procedural question. We're doing each event separately as a as a motion, is that correct?
I believe the
Because we just, I mean, the one that Michael read just now is for Liberty Fest, right?
Right.
So we're going to do four votes on this.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Michael?
Greg, can you tell me the amount of time that's required for the MLCC one special permit? Do you, do you know off the top of your head how long it takes to start that application process?
They say, I believe the standard is thirty or sixty days, but back up with the state. Longer waits for these, these types of items.
Yeah, thank you. I know we had talked at the end of last fall about potentially doing something at maybe Preservation Park with, with, with food trucks and things along those lines. So I'm just trying to keep that in back of my mind as we start that food truck dialogue and present something to the board to make sure we do it with enough time to, if we want to implement something, to have enough time to actually follow up and have something for the summer.
Certainly.
Any other questions? So Clerk Segers, can we please have a roll call on the first motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, first motion passes. Can I hear the second motion, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at the Rally on the Ridge Event on Saturday, July twenty four, two thousand and twenty one. And to approve the following resolution be adopted that the Charter Township of Canton, through its duly elected officers, make applicable to the MLCC for special licensing of alcohol consumption on the premises to be in effect on Saturday, July twenty four, two thousand and twenty one at Preservation Park located on five hundred, at five hundred North Ridge Road in Canton, Michigan, County of Wayne. And that the township supervisor and clerk be authorized to sign and submit this application.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the second motion? Clerk Segers, can we please take a roll on the second motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Second motion passes. Can I please have a motion ready for the third motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at the Canton Historical Society's Brew Brought Some Bands at the Barn fundraiser on Saturday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty one. Furthermore, I move that the following resolution be adopted that the Charter Township of Canton, through its duly elected officers, make application to the MLCC for a special license for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises to be in effect on Saturday, September twenty twenty one at the Katie Boyer Barn in Preservation Park located at five hundred North Ridge Road in Canton, Michigan, County of Wayne, that the Canton Township Supervisor and clerk be authorized to sign and submit this application.
Support.
Thank you, any questions on this third motion? I think, great, Clerk Segers, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdek.
Hi.
Segrist, I, Slavens.
Hi.
Ian Snyderman.
Hi.
Okay, the third motion passes. Can I please hear the fourth motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol Thursday Ma'am Supervisor, I move to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol, Thursday Night Live Concerts being held on July eight, July fifteen, July twenty-second, July twenty-nine, August fifth, August twelfth, and August nineteenth in twenty twenty-one. And furthermore, I move the following resolution be adopted, that Maraschino's Bar and Restaurant, through its duly elected officers, make application to the MLCC for a special license for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises to be in effect on the following dates during the Thursday Night Live Concert at Heritage Park located at ten-ten Canton Center Road, Canton, Michigan, in the county of Wayne.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions on this fourth motion? Tanya?
Yeah, I just heard a question on why, you know, is that because Maraschino's Bar approached us? That why they specifically are being given this request? Like they are allowed to do this licensed request rather than any other business? Just curious about that.
Yeah, so the Maraschinos did approach us on this as really just a way to get their name out. So they donate one percent of the profits to charities, so they're not actually making any money off of this. I believe last time they actually donated a hundred percent of the revenue, deducting their expenses for being out there either. Actually incurred the expenses of staffing it and donated a hundred percent of the revenue without covering their own costs.
Thank you.
Kate, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, I guess, you know, following up on Tanya's question, which I was also wondering about, but I'm just wondering if other businesses were given the opportunity to to participate in this or, or, you know, I guess I, I'm concerned that Maraschino's is the only one that's named on this. And there might be other businesses that maybe want to, to do this also.
So the more, as far as alcohol service goes, it gets very challenging with that because you do have to have the state authorization for who's going to be serving. And Maraschino's was, especially since they approached us about doing it on behalf of charity, we hadn't considered anyone else doing that, like for Liberty Fest, it's done by Rotary, who is doing it as a fundraiser for them. So we don't have any other for-profit businesses that are doing this. And the reason we include Maraschino's is it was their idea as they approached us and because they were donating all the proceeds.
Do we know which charity they're donating to?
We do, but I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can find.
Second Chance at Life, it's listed in the R, in the, in the RBA.
Is it? Okay.
Second Chance at Life, which is a Westland-based charity that I believe was founded by in two thousand eight by Shelley Morel and her mother, who's a lung recipient, Carol Mancini. And they provide financial assistance to transplant patients who are waiting for receiving or recovering from a transplant. They're patient-centered and patient-driven, according to their website, anyway.
I'm trying to see it in there and.
Any other questions?
I see it way down at the bottom of there. Okay.
From the bottom of the page.
So Maraschino's doesn't financially benefit at all from the arrangement. He must have.
Right.
They must have come to us with the nonprofit in mind as well. That's very nice.
Yeah, especially when, yeah. They staffed it and everything, yeah.
The benefit to them is just the getting their name out at the event, basically.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Segrist, can you please call, roll on the vote, please, on the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gangbuli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segrist, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G eleven. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for Heritage Park enhancements.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to authorize the supervisor yourself to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for the enhancements to Heritage Park and to authorize the Finance Department to make necessary budget adjustments to the twenty-twenty-one budget and record of budget to record the Wayne County contribution and the related expenditures.
Support.
Thank you. Wayne County has agreed to fund the enhancements at Heritage Park through the Wayne County Parks Village in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. An intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Wayne County and Canton has been directed for approval by both governing authorities. Greg, did you want to add anything to this?
Sure, yeah, this, basically what we're looking for, the improvements we're looking to make with these funds are a couple of different shade structures depending on design and funding available, you know, how much the actual shade structures cost over near the splash pad. So it would be ideally one large shade structure and then one or two smaller ones for individual families. And then in addition to that, there would be a hydration station, easy for me to say, hydration station in the area. We don't have any drinking fountains or bottle fill stations over there. So we would have a drinking fountain with a bottle fill as well. And hopefully it would be enough. We're looking to have a sunscreen dispenser as well. So if you don't bring your sunscreen, you can get sunscreen as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Kate?
All right, no question, just a comment that I think this is a great idea. And as someone who has very light skin, it's wonderful to see more shade at, at the splash pad. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Another comment on that, if you don't mind. I was gonna say, wow.
Shades at Heritage Park.
The, yeah, the construction would be for summer. It would probably not be constructed until after Labor Day. So it would be the summer of twenty twenty-two. And a previous project through Wayne County, the Pavilion at Preservation Park, if you drive by today, beginnings of the structure, the actual footing, the, the concrete pad and there, but the actual wood structure is beginning to go up.
And we all are also, this summer, seeing some shaded areas put at Heritage Park. Also, is that correct?
Yes, we're going to have some hydration stations. I believe it is Klonos that is donating, no, Rotary, again, sorry, Rotary donating to hydration stations to go throughout the path system on Heritage Park.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Question. We initially talked about potentially looking at putting in a wheelchair swing or something, playground, some of the equipment that could be used for individuals who have a disability, much like we put in the, the kind of rotary, almost tilt-a-whirl type device over at the Heritage Park, which is pretty awesome. Did, is there a plan in the future to look at doing that or?
Yes, yes. So we are actually, that was the, we-go round was funded through CDBG and we're looking at utilizing, applying for CDBG funding for accessible equipment at the North Pavilion. So we still planning on doing that.
We were just able to use different funding for it.
Is the, is the strategy to kind of have that North Pavilion be a playground where individual, people could bring somebody with disabilities to, to really explore and have all the options there. I guess that makes sense as opposed to having, you know, one accessible item at new, at different, you know, having it spread out throughout the township to have, to have one kind of key.
Ideally, what we want to have is some accessible features at all of our playgrounds, but really transition that North Pavilion Playground to a universally accessible so that every single feature someday would be able to be used by whether you have a disability or not. We're not there, but we would like to, our master plan is to get that playground to that status. So that any playground you go to, you'll have something to use. But if you really want to be able to use everything, this would be the playground for you. And it's centrally located as well.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Clerk Segrist, please call a roll call on the motion.
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gangbuli.
Hi.
Grab Hudak.
Hi.
Segrist, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Last item on the agenda, G twelve. Consider authorization of twenty-twenty-one fiscal year specialized services operating assistance program agreement with SMART.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one specialized services operating assistance agreement between SMART and the Charter Township of Canton for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and authorize yourself, the Township Supervisor, to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Support.
Thank you. The Township submitted its annual specialized services application with SMART to provide funding for the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. SMART has notified the Township that it is eligible for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars under the program from October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Canton Leisure Services is requesting board authorization for the specialized services operating assistance program agreement with SMART. Greg, did you want to add anything?
Just that this is one of two grants that we get for the operations of this program and it's a great service to our residents.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Kate?
I muted myself. I just wanted to thank Greg for answering questions that I sent this afternoon so quickly. And also just wanted to say that I agree that this is a really nice program for our community. My, my sister who lives in Massachusetts uses a similar program because she's disabled and it provides her a little bit of independence. And I think that's really important. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Clerk Segrist, please call, roll, call.
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gangbuli.
Hi.
Grab Hudak.
Hi.
Segrist, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Ian Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next thing on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any additional public comment? We'll keep our hands raised. Oh, see, we have five attendees here. Don't see any hands raised. Okay. Any other comments from our directors? Anything for the board members? Diane?
I just wanted to remind residents that we're going to be open for cash tax payments on February sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, from ten to two. That's the last day you can pay your taxes. And some folks like to pay with cash. So we will be open from ten to two. You will have to wear a mask and we will screen you before entering the building. We limit how many people come in the building as well. But it will be open on that day. And you can always mail your taxes or we have that drop box right in the front where you can just put your payment in and we, it goes right into the vault. It's safe. And we're checking it every day. We're at work every two hours. We go in the vault and take all the payments out to process them. So just wanted to let everybody know, February sixteenth.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
Yeah, I, so one, I wanted to notify the board that I received a new professional certification from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I am now a certified municipal clerk. So I feel good about that. And got some more letters behind my name on my email. I changed my signature today. So you can see that in future emails. Additionally, we conducted our risk limiting audit last week. And that was conducted successfully. We have an additional random audit for one precinct that is outstanding. We will be doing with, with the county and we're waiting to hear from them on when to finalize that. And you know, despite what you might hear on the internet, we do do audits. Additionally, yeah, there was a, an oversight committee hearing from the Senate today. Unfortunately, one of the senators who is on the elections committee for the Senate asked about fractional voting, this idea that if you somehow voted for, and he was pretty clear which candidate he thought. But if you voted for a certain candidate, that your vote wouldn't be weighted as one. It would be like point seven five, which if you ever watched the movie Office Space, that's how they ended up making, making money, was through fractional accounting. But there is a, this is an interesting conspiracy that's made its way on the internet. It was bizarre to hear an elected official say it at a committee meeting, specifically an elected official who sits on the Elections Commission. So I wanted to reaffirm and reassure everybody in Canton that the, one, the tabulators can't do fractional tabulation. And so you don't have to worry about that. If, if any of you were on the dark web and you came across that conspiracy, it is completely baseless. For the public, you might want to pay attention to who you elect and how qualified they are to hold public office. And I hope that the Senate and the House take it more seriously, who they put on certain committees. That was shocking today, to be quite honest, but these are the times we live in, fortunately.
Wow, thank you. Anyone else? Diane, why don't you tell them about what you are, about your new appointment?
I was, I am, I was appointed the president of Wayne County Treasures Association. It's a, congra, thank you. It's, we meet quarterly. It's all the treasures in Wayne County. Just updating new laws that are going on. And it's a great group of treasures and I enjoy it. And I was honored to be president. So thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. Director Bow, why don't you tell them where you've been appointed? This is important.
Thank you. Thanks for acknowledging it. I'm waiting till March and wait till Gretchen makes her decision as the governor. But I believe I'll be headed to the organized retail crime task force. It's a commission there, appointed by the governor's office. Currently, I'm on the Human Trafficking Commission.
Congratulations. All this talent in Canton, they recognize it. Anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to say one thing.
Wendy, Wendy.
Oh, yes. Wendy, yes. Thank you for my.
We didn't have to come to Wendy. I was asked to sit on the, on an external advisory board for Michigan State's University Accounting Program to help them kind of direct, from the governmental perspective, to help them help their accounting program figure out what they need to be focusing on for accounting graduates, at least to help them from the government perspective, to help get it accounting students, the government, they need, the government classes that they need. So I, I'm sitting on a four-year term for that board.
Congratulations. See, they see all the talent in Canton. They're trying to take away, make sure, keep it busy. All right, thank you. I just want to remind everybody, so we have a testing site behind us. Residents, we're getting a lot of calls and emails on vaccinations. However, there are residents that still want to test. So if you need testing, it's important to try to go online or have, have somebody help you go online and fill out the information. It's much easier to do at your home rather than sitting in your car. So we have a test site and hope to change your vaccination site. Many residents are calling about vaccinations. We are basically telling everybody to remember to work with your primary care physician first. See if you can get on their list and get help with them. You can also, Myers and various. Um, you can also, uh, Myers in various cities, not Canton, uh, it's in Westland, Livonia, um, Allen Park and Taylor. You can also register with them because they get their vaccinations directly through the federal government, not, um, through the county like we do. So there's different avenues and, um, they're saying to sign up for everything you can when you get called, you know, you'll be the first one there, hopefully. Um, another thing is we're gonna be opening a spot on the business, on our website for businesses to look at because, um, we are, we're seeing grants and loans coming through quickly and they have short windows. So if you have, if our small business or business in Canton, please watch our website. It will be coming. We're gonna be launching it the end of this week and you can see where you can go to get some grants and loans. And of course, looking at leisure services, we have, uh, always look for that, you know, to try to get people together. We have, we had Car Bingo here the other day and there's gonna be Bingo again in February. All right, well, does anyone have anything else?
May I briefly, cause you brought up the COVID, um, site behind us. Um, in the, in the future, if you talk to, I know, I know that the supervisor talks to the county executive more. You know, he's not gonna take a phone call from the clerk. Uh, but if you talk to Warren Evans, uh, you know, I would really appreciate putting a little bit of pressure on them about the, their, their ability to deliver this vaccine. Um, I saw that Michigan in its entirety, you know, our goal was to have fifty thousand people, uh, immunized. Uh, we're, we're at like thirty-five thousand and I, to get to our target of seventy thousand or seventy percent in the state of Michigan immunized, yeah, it will take a year from today for that to happen. Um, we really need to kick it in gear and, um, it's, it's, it's been less than thrilling to watch this rollout of the vaccination process. It feels like we're kind of stuck in quicksand. So hopefully, uh, I'm sure they know it, but if you, if you get a chance to, if you get his ear and you, and you, and you, and you have a list of things to bring up, you know, I, I would, I would hope that they would really put somebody in charge who knows what's going on.
Yes, thank you. Actually, thank you for bringing that up, cause actually I did speak to Mr. Evans yesterday. Um, we, I had a meeting and he called into it, and so I brought that up. And he said he is speaking, he has been putting pressure on Governor Whitmer because other counties are getting more vaccinations, uh, obviously around, surrounding us than we are. So he said, he said that was unfair. Also, the Conference of Western Wayne has been pushing that also. So you're right, and, um, our state representatives, Brungy Purie, Matt Colazar, and State Senator Dana Polhanke, Melissa Dopp are also putting the pressure on. So yes, you're right. This, this has to move along better than.
It was his position that it was the governor's fault?
He's saying the state needs to, a lot, like, I got a email from residents saying, giving all the numbers from all the surrounding counties that they were getting more vaccinations than we were. And he said, he admitted that was not fair, and he's pushing that Governor Whitmer, that Wayne County should be getting more vaccinations and quick, and also more expedient.
Okay, but it is their intention to, to turn the site behind us into a vaccination site, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, but they have yet to do that.
Correct.
Is it because of lack of vaccines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. And we, you get, um, we do have St. Joe's right here next to us that are giving vaccinations and a lot of people accidentally come into our parking lot. So there's a lot of that going back and forth also. I'm sorry for testing. So we're, we're doing texting, testing next door to each other. But most people want vaccinations. That's what they're asking about.
Me too.
Thank you. Do I have a, your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Segras, please call a roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres die Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Bye.